I'll bring us back to order as we're coming out of executive session. Can I have Councilmember Bangs please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Mustard is absent tonight. Is there a motion to excuse?
That'd be a big yes. I'm going to say we have a motion by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Bangs. Thank you. Other than that, let the record show that all of the councilmembers are here. Is there any correspondence?
Well, Your Honor, I guess email does count as correspondence, does it not?
Yes, it does.
So, we received an email from WashDOT today letting us know of some reductions in lane capacity on I-5 that'll be coming up this summer. WashDOT is going to be doing a rather large project on I-5, starting at the DeWamish River that goes all the way south to the 320th and Federal Way. And for the most part, they're going to be doing all that work in the evenings, but there are five weekends this summer that they will be reducing I-5 for the whole weekend down to two lanes. Those dates are, and they'll be on the website, so you don't have to scribble these down real quick unless you want to, July 8th through the 11th, July 15th through the 18th, and July 22nd through the 25th, and then again on August 12th through the 15th, and then the 19th through the 22nd. Those first three dates, the location where they're narrowing it down to two lanes is south 188th Street to Kent Des Moines Road, and the second set of dates was the DeWamish River to Interurban. So, we will get that posted on our website so folks know about it, and those of you who are lucky enough to be here tonight to hear about it, you are now forewarned. And that's our correspondence, Your Honor.
Okay. We're at that point where we will take comments from the public. Comments are made from the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and each person will have three minutes to speak. Okay, the first person I have that has signed up to speak is Shirley Jones.
Shirley Jones, 815 South 219th Street, number four, Des Moines. Garbage cans, we need two garbage cans in two places. One is at the bus stop, the southbound bus stop in front of the Dollar Store. There is one on the east side of the street for the northbound, but there's one for the southbound, and there's always a lot of garbage around there. So, that's the first thing people see when they come in from the north. And also, a garbage can in front of the Dollar Store. There is nothing there, and it gets a lot of trash around there. Thank you.
Next person is Dr. Wendy Giora. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. We have property at 26449 Des Moines Drive, Marineview Drive South, sorry, and we will be moving here in about six months. And in looking for a place to live, I went online and looked at several real estate sites, and all of them suggest that when you're trying to find the best place to live, choosing the neighborhood is almost as important as choosing the particular house or apartment that you're going to live in. It needs to be safe, with low crime rates, affordable, and provide you with everything that you need. If you're planning on purchasing a home, you have to keep in mind that you're not just buying a house, you're investing in a neighborhood. Among key factors listed on all the real estate sites, in the top three key factors that you should look for when investing in a property is the crime rate. In the Crime Statistics Annual Comparison and Trend online, published by the Des Moines Police Department, the latest one being comparison of 2013 to 14, there were increases in crime in some of the major areas, such as burglary, by 29% between those two years. I'm sorry, that was robbery. Burglary, it was 13%, and an increase in officers being assaulted by 150%. For the 2013 FBI Crime Statistics Report, out of the 113 cities listed, Des Moines ranked number 76 for amount of crimes committed during that year, 2014. In looking at 113 cities, for a community one would desire to live in, you would expect the community to be somewhere in the top 25, not number 76. So, it's an area to work on. Lastly, officers per 1,000 residents in Des Moines, we have 1.04. The average for Washington State is 1.49. That means for a community similar to Des Moines of 30,000 residents, we have 31.2 officers, whereas the average for the state of Washington is 44.7. I would urge the City Council to consider ways of funding for more police officers so that we can all count on living in a safe and desirable community. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next would be Candace Urquhart.
Hi, Candace Urquhart, Marineview Drive. Let's see, I'm curious why we are spending so much time on Government 101. I am assuming you all know it like the back of your hand. While access to the information is appreciated, spending council's precious time while we have so many other important issues seems wasteful. Perhaps we could spend the time in question and answer. I know we all would appreciate that. My second comment is, as we continue our search for our new city manager, I would like to urge the council to hire outside council to train our new hire. With how the city has been ran for the last 20 years, I believe we need this help. Many cities will hire an interim city manager to assess our weaknesses and strengths. This will help ensure we are starting with a clean slate and would help ensure not repeating any of our past problems. Thank you.
Okay, I have no one else signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to address the council that did not get a chance to sign up to speak? Up, okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sheila Brush. I live in Des Moines, Washington. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I want to reflect on last week. I have nothing prepared, so I'm really speaking from the heart. Since I've been coming here, it's very difficult. It's nerve-wracking to be up here. In fact, when Mayor Matt Pena took his chair the very first night, he acknowledged some citizens that it is hard and to focus on him, and that was very gracious. But since I've been coming here, I think from what I'm speaking is the truth, but if I am misinformed, then graciously correct me. But an hour and a half later, to imply that I'm a liar when I perhaps just didn't have my facts straight, on that note, it's demoralizing. And I actually got a number of emails from previous citizens that used to attend, and they used to get up and speak out, and the reason that they don't anymore is because the atmosphere. And this is a court, if you will, and if we can't have a dialogue of respect, then how are we ever going to raise the bar of our city? It has to start here. So, tonight I'm offering an olive branch to those of you who I may have offended with my words. They were not malicious, they were passionate, and I'm very coachable. I just want to understand what's going on, because I plan on living here a long time. I've been here for 16 years now. I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here every week, schedule permitting, and if I do speak out, and I am misinformed, I do apologize, as I did last week, right here at the podium. And I would respect you to respect me enough as a citizen to be cautious with your words when you address the audience and the citizen that perhaps is misinformed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll move us forward. So, we are now on to board and committee reports, and I will start with Mayor Protem Pennington.
Had no committee reports since last week, so I can report, but thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing, and that's it.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Ended with Assistant City Manager, Economic Development Director Michael Mathias, the Soundside Alliance meeting, Policy Committee meeting yesterday. It was the first meeting of the year, and there's a lot of new representatives on the Soundside Alliance, including from C-TAC and Burean. The discussion focused on a review of the breakfast that was held last fall at the Port of Seattle, where the attendance was up 50% from the year before. So, they really liked, basically debriefed on what issues, may have brought additional people, the location, the topics, the presentations, and planning again for this year. There's other activities that they would like to plan as well, including a mid-year social with the people who've been following the events, and they're adopting a budget for this next year, which will spend more than they're taking in, but the ending fund balance is still healthy. And I reminded them, based on experiences we've had, that we need to think about that being sustainable on an ongoing basis, even though we're able to use some of the ending fund balance that's there for, as part of that program. So, it was a good turnout, there's a lot of good debrief about projects that are happening in different cities. In fact, one of the ones that caught my attention was, I think there's six or seven hotels that are being built in C-TAC alone. That's over 1,300 hotel rooms, and there's been a lot of interest expressed in a variety of hotels here in Des Moines and different places, smaller hotels, but nonetheless, it's really amazing the number of hotel rooms that they're talking about building, and just shows the growth in the business environment here in Puget Sound and what's bringing people in. So, it was a good first meeting, and there's also statistics from the Small Business Development Center, which Soundside Alliance initially got off the ground a number of years ago. And so, if you'd like to see those statistics and see what small businesses are being helped here in the community in terms of jobs and in terms of investment, help with business plans, things like that, be more than happy to share that. And then to address Sheila's comments, I want to apologize for my frustration. There are some issues that you hear over and over again that are sensitive. That particular one was very sensitive to me. I'm the only person on the council, still on the council, who was in the position of having to lay off police officers back in 2009, when we were doing budget consideration for 2010. And for five of those positions, they should never have had to happen. And there's a lot of backstory behind that, but especially when we went out and asked the voters for levy lift to be able to hire those officers to begin with, it's very frustrating, it's very frustrating for me, that particular topic. Like I said last week, we all, all of us want additional police officers. There's both a short-term piece to this puzzle and a long-term piece to this puzzle, and we're trying to figure out what those are. But I know you do speak out of passion, and you do, and I want to, again, apologize for my knee-jerk reaction in terms of the way that I responded, but, because I know you have a good heart, and I know that you have the best interests of the community in mind. But I also wanted you to know why that's such a sensitive topic to me, because I just, I don't ever want us to be in the same position again. And so, we need to be really thoughtful about how we go about adding additional police officers when we do it. So, anyhow, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Beck.
So, no Environment Committee report, but I do have a question for staff. If you know the answer, Tony, and it's an environmental question. So, I've had one business owner and one resident ask me about what the first resident spoke of, the garbage can issue, and so I took a drive around the city for a couple of days, and I did notice that there is a lot of garbage, but specifically around the metro bus stops. And I'm talking about the metro stops where there's just the sign, not the actual cubicle that's covered that has the can in there. I realize metro comes and they service those things, but I'm just curious, at the actual bus stops throughout the city, do you know, is our city staff responsible for cleaning that? Does CleanScapes do that? Does Metro police the area around the stops? Or, because that seems to be where I've seen a lot of the garbage, or if you don't know, but I'm just curious.
At bus stops, it is Metro. They're the ones who decide to put the garbage cans out, and knowing the great bureaucracy that they are, they've probably got a hierarchy, which ones get a garbage can, which ones don't. It'll be based upon the type of stop, how many times the buses come by, how much ridership is going on, et cetera, et cetera. That doesn't mean that we can't ourselves decide to put a garbage can someplace that, well, it doesn't meet Metro's criteria. There's obviously a problem, just because of the nature of the particular location. So, the lady who showed up, we definitely will, there you are, we'll take a look at both of those locations, talk with the Dollar Tree management, and strongly suggest they put out a garbage can. And I will say, Councilmember Nutting pointed that out very early on when they opened up, they didn't have a garbage can, and he predicted what is happening. So, we will follow up with their management, and then as far as that bus stop and other bus stops in town, we can talk with Metro. If they can get it done, great. If not, we'll put some of our own out.
Yeah, and it's primarily the stops that don't have cans, Adam. That's where I've seen the most, but.
On the Dollar Tree specifically, I talked to, I don't remember if it was the manager or somebody there, they actually have people who go out every day and clean up the parking lot in advance of when they open. But I said to them, well, you should have a garbage can here, and that way you're not going to be picking up as much stuff, but they've not taken any action on it, so you may want to just strongly suggest to them that, you know, short of the good neighbor agreement approached.
Or sending a staff person out three or four times a day to pick it up. Yep, okay, we'll follow up.
So, thanks for that question. And then, only other comment, the resident who spoke about the Government 101, and I appreciate your opinion. To me, that class is invaluable, and I've been in town here 35 years, and I thought I knew a lot about how this city ran, but for me, just being new on the council, it's been very helpful, and I think it's a good tool down the road for especially younger people that may want to get involved, because these are all being videotaped, and I think this is something that's going to be helpful for people who want to know more about the city. So, for me personally, I don't think it is a waste of time, but I do respect your opinion, and I've really enjoyed it, and I'm looking forward to what Chief Delgado has to share tonight. So, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Councilmember Bangs.
I had my liaison meeting with the Arts Commission on Tuesday, and a lot of activity going on with them. The opening of the Art on Poverty Bag, they did choose the art sculptures, and that'll be unveiled at the Farmer's Market June 4th. They'll have their concerts in the park beginning Wednesday, July, or, yeah, July 6th, five concerts, and also Shakespeare in the Park, August 7th. They have been really working around the clock on updating their event calendar and social media, which is going to feature actually all of the city events, and they're going to be updating Facebook, the website. They have, I thought I had it, but I guess not, they have maps out soon, as well as flyers that will be going out. The Arts Commission also is advertising, or will soon be advertising, for sophomore junior high school volunteer as a junior arts commissioner, which is a non-voting position, so you can go on the website, take a look. If you've got high schoolers or know anyone interested in getting involved in the arts, that would be great. It's a great opportunity for them. Also, encouraging everyone to go to www.tothethebeachwa.gov. No, com, no gov. Okay. Then I have a really good friend that is on the Board of Trustees for Highline College, and she informed me that Highline College earned the prestigious Award of Excellence from the American Association of Community Colleges, which is phenomenal. This is the second time they've won this award. The last time was not necessarily for this topic. It's their exemplary collaboration and working relationships resulting in effective community college governance, which I think is phenomenal. Highline was one of seven colleges in the nation awarded at the Association Annual Convention, which was held in Chicago on April 11th, and the award ceremony recognized those colleges that promote economic and social vitality for the community and ongoing commitment to the success of their students. I don't know if we know who the Board of Trustees are, but Dan Altmaier from Federal Way, Debrina Jackson Gandy in Des Moines, Fred Mendoza, Normandy Park, Bob, forgive me if I say it wrong, Rogner, Federal Way, Sili Savusa, South Seattle, and of course, President Jack Birmingham. So, thank you. Tony said yes, that's right. Okay, very good. Also, there's going to be a job fair, April 19th, focusing on transportation, distribution, and logistics at Highline College, so go on the website. There's a lot of good stuff happening. Don't forget, we have Earth Day, for those of us that can get out there. Be a great time to volunteer. The volunteers are needed to help clean along Des Moines Creek, so you can also go on the website to sign up for that. So, just really good to get involved in those kinds of duty projects. And that's my report.
Before we move forward, we've started a bit of a tradition to recognize excellence in our city. Would the council like to move forward with the proclamation for Highline College, or?
Good time, yeah. Perfect time, absolutely.
Can we get?
Our proclamation writer's making a note now.
Sweet, great.
All right.
Awesome, great. Thank you, Mayor.
I look forward to presenting that. Councilmember Nutting.
I have no report.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I got in at about 1:00 this morning, and of course.
From Mexico.
Well, I was on vacation. I'm a little exhausted, so. We had the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting tonight, and we talked about citing of essential public facilities and what that rewrite of that ordinance is going to look like to help prevent what we all know just happened and dodged a bullet on to help us along those roads. We talked about some code maintenance and discussion about the Lawson House, and we're looking into that a little further to what might be in the contract that was signed in 89, I think it was, on that house. And we also talked about mailbox, the blocking of mailboxes, and we're waiting for some more information, which that'll be brought up in municipal facilities as well? Or is that the Lawson?
No, the Lawson House.
But we're waiting for some more information back on the blocking of mailboxes before we move forward with any of the ordinances there. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. I'll add on the citing of essential public facilities, that our public hearing date is May 12th. Correct?
Correct.
No? Okay. Just have a few items. I had the pleasure last night of attending the Main Street Group Discussion, and it was, I saw some new faces there. Now, I hadn't been there in a little while, but it was great to see more people getting involved. They are, I think they're definitely moving down a path that is really going to help bring our city forward. It's a great group of volunteers, and I'm very appreciative for the work that they do. Then I went to a, attended a portion of the meeting for the Des Moines Marina Association. First of all, it's a great group of people. They're very committed and interested in the long-term viability of the marina, and they're, it's one thing to be passionate about it, but they also are reaching out to the council and helping us understand, like so many of you are in other ways, what some key issues are and they're posing questions that are really helping us to come up with better solutions. So, again, it was another great meeting. I think they're a great group, and both of them are. We have many of them around the city, but it's nice to be invited, and it's great when I get the opportunity to attend. The only other item I didn't really prepare for but wanted to make a comment on was the Government 101 program. And the reason that we started this, to be clear, is some was for the benefit of the council, but we were also getting a lot of email around, why do we do things this way? What department does this? Why is that department doing that? It was just, it seemed that there was a disconnect between the city and the community on how we functioned. And so, we made a very, we had deliberate, a variety of conversations last November, and we really made, decided that we needed to make a very specific effort to help communicate how, you know, to the public, how your city operates, and kind of let you know what department does what and why they do it, and so forth. So, these are taped, or I should say recorded, I don't think anybody uses tape anymore, and they will be available on Channel 21 in the future, and you can stream them, I believe. We will be able to stream it from the website. The intent in the format is to take a college classroom setting and kind of walk through high level, so someone could get a good, solid, general understanding, and then if they wanted to tunnel in with it and get into additional information, then they could. So, I do apologize if, for some who have been involved with the city at many different levels, that this seems maybe even a bit redundant, and to some councilmembers who have been here for a while, we are seeing things that we know, and in some cases, there are always nuances where we're seeing things that we were kind of aware of but needed to be reminded of. So, I ask your patience, and I do appreciate the comments. We've received some, both good and some similar to what was expressed from the podium, but I really think that long-term, this will hopefully be a good resource for the community. And so, thank you for your patience on that. At this time, I would move to our, the administration report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few things this evening. So, first one I start with is our friends from the Auditor's Office to come forward and do what is called the Opening or the Entrance Conference for the audit of our financial year last year. They also do a, well, I'll let them explain it. And we are calling this also Government 101, because a lot of people don't understand what it is the auditor does, what they're looking for, so I think this is a great opportunity to, for all of us to learn something, so.
Okay. My name's Joanne Klein, and I'm the Audit Manager of Team Tacoma, and Irene is here. She is the auditor in charge of your audit this year, and we're here, like you said, to tell you about the entrance, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak to council directly. Sometimes it's good for you to understand what we're doing as well. We're going to talk, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our office and the audit, and just. and just go over some highlights of things that, paperwork that we have to do. So our vision is to make sure that, that the public funds are taken care of. And so we do that in a variety of ways, but that's our goal, is we want to make sure that we are looking at various areas in your, in your city, and that we, at the end of the day, we report to you the results that we find. So, and we're hoping by doing that, you are able to work better, more efficiently, and then you also earn your citizens' trust. So our audit scope is January of last year to December 31st, and we're going to do three types of audits: accountability, financial statement, and single audit. And I'll go over those individually. So the accountability audit is, is more of a high-risk type of audit. Things that we are looking for are generally of interest to your citizens, that they want to make sure your funds are being used appropriately. So we find different ways, we analyze the city in different ways. We look at, we read your council minutes, we look at trends in your financial data, we hear things from citizens, or some of us live in your city sometimes, and so we take all the information we get, things that are going out in the cities, you know, like a theme, and we'll plan our audit. And basically, at the end of the day, we want to give you a report that says whether your, your controls were in place and protecting from misuse and abuse. So we also audit to make sure you're in compliance with state law and your own policies and procedures. So we're looking at your city's policies and procedures during the course of our audit. So this year, these are the results from our preliminary assessments, and we, we're always reassessing. So at the end, we'll meet with you again, and we'll tell you what we ended up doing. Some of these areas are self-explanatory, self-insurance. It's a legal requirement that we look at your self-insurance program every two years. Cash receeding is risky. It's coming in, the money's coming in, so we want to be able to, to look at those controls. And we don't look at every cash receeding location every year, but we'll pick some and test, and also look at the controls more than just counting that money. Payroll, we like to look at payroll. Application controls for receipting systems. When you have a new system, we really like to look at new systems. And things that we look at, you may not normally consider, it's like access to a computer system, or, or who has access to write things off. And so we, we actually go in through the system and have, we'll try a transaction, or we look at the, the systems to make recommendations to protect money. And then purchases, where, purchases, we look at your general disbursements, and we also look at credit cards or procurement cards, and we, and we consider your policy. So those are, that's what's been selected for your accountability audit. In the end, we'll meet with you and let you know how the audit resulted. Financial statements, you, the city reports on a gap, and so we're going to do your financial statements, and at the end of the audit, we'll give you a, an opinion on the results of our work. We don't look at every single line item in your financial statements, but we can give reasonable insurance and, on our opinions. So you, you, you actually submit your financials to GFOA, so we'll give you that letter in time to do that submission. So, let's see. Federal grants, this year, the federal grant requirement went up to $750,000, so, and, and at your city, we only need to audit one, one program, and that's your highway grant program. And we're, they're, the feds have, they tell us what we're going to look at. There's 12 requirements now, and so we'll go through and understand your controls and give you a result of that at the end of the day. And it is the transportation grant that we're going to audit, because you have most of your dollars going through that. So this is money coming from the feds, and most likely from Department Transportation. So the engagement letter, we started a couple years back, but it just makes it clear what the city's responsibilities are and what the auditor's responsibilities are. And we, we just get that signed and we move forward, but it, it just identifies what your responsibilities are. So, so how we report to you, at the end of the audit, we would have another meeting, and we would give you an audit report. The audit report, if we found an issue that was significant, we call it a finding, and that's included in the audit report. The city has a chance to respond. It, a less serious is a management letter, and that would be a letter issued to the board, and it would have the results of whatever it is. Exit items, we consider, because we consider, you know, is it something new? Is it something the dollar amount? Is it something that's going on? We, we have a lot of considerations that we do. But if it's an exit item, we feel like the city's going to take care of that, or already did take care of that, but we want to bring it to your attention that it, that it had occurred. So those would be just in a, throughout the audit comment to let you know. So we have the, everybody always wants to know how much we cost, so it's about $54,000. And then we do charge for travel, and that will, that covers all three audits.
How do you price that out? Is it based on an estimated number of hours, or at some set rate, or?
So we do have a certain amount of hours for your federal audit, your financial statement audit, and your accountability audit. And then based on the financial statement and this federal audit, pretty much it, that's, it's pretty consistent. The accountability audit, it's, it's rotated, is there annual, or is that every two years? Every two years. So accountability audit, we do every two years, so we budget for that two-year period. And that can go up or down depending on the risk. But we try to be consistent with other cities your size with same issues. So, yeah, so it's, historically, I don't believe it's gone up, but that's how we, we determine. If, if we get into an area and then there's problems, we, we might be coming back and talking and letting, letting you know that we have a problem, and it might take a little bit longer, so. And likewise, if it, if it's clean and we get through earlier, then it might come slightly under. So we do take, we get information that's confidential, payroll, things like that, and we just want to let you know that we take that information seriously. We safeguard it to the best of our ability. And then, I, let's see, the expected communication, as we go through the audit, we'll make sure that Danielle is informed of any issues that we have. We'll schedule a, we'll schedule a informal exit, so that way when we come to the, to you, there's no surprises. Everything should be, be aware. There is an audit issue process, and that's if the city or you all have a problem that you can't get resolved with the frontline staff, we want to make sure that you're aware of this process, and that you should feel free to call me, the Audit Manager, or Mark Reposo, who's the Deputy Director over the audit. We don't want to have any, we want to work together, so. Also at the, oh, there's several emerging issues, and that's actually on your handout, the details. This is something Danielle's going to have to work on over the next year, and, and it's quite, yeah, it takes, it takes a while to implement, so. Also, these are some available resources we have. The local government support team is available, and they answer questions. And also, they've been known to do the Green Belt training, or lean training for different types of entities. And you can see the results on their website. And then also, there's a way to look in the Government Performance Center, that you can do queries to compare yourselves to other cities of your size. Let's see. And then also, our contact information is in the spreadsheet, is in the PowerPoint, as well as in your handout. The only other thing, well, the only other thing I wanted to mention, you have two handouts. The second handout is for the Transportation Benefit District, and basically, for that audit, it's just the Transportation Benefit District for a three-year period, 2013 to 2015. And it's a closeout audit, because you've, the city has absorbed the, the function, so, but we have to audit every dollar. So we're going to do a three-year audit, we'll give you the report, and then next time, it'll be included as part of the city as a whole. So.
And then if people want to see prior year audits for the city of Des Moines, where at your website would they go to get the?
So our, the State Auditor's Office website has all the reports for all the entities that we audit, and it's just seo.wa.gov, and you can pull and look down at any, any report you want. So. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, I had previously emailed the council a draft ordinance that if adopted would, would create a Citizens Advisory Council, something that we've talked about on numerous occasions, including a few weeks ago, when we talked about the Community Council, or the Communications Plan. My intent giving it to you now was just to let you see the flavor of it, see if there is any major issues or questions that you may have, try to talk about those tonight, but the intent obviously is if you can, want to move forward with this, the mayor will schedule it for a regular discussion at a council meeting, and I know it's, for him, it's sooner than later, and actually, I think for all of you. So I think we'd have room on the April 28th meeting that we could put it on there, but are there any major thoughts that you'd like to share with me this evening? Is this going in the direction you were hoping it would?
I'm asking for input.
One question. So we will get the word out, hopefully, Matt, to the general public that we're putting this together, and we're seeking applications, is that the idea?
That would be one of the phases at, going forward, absolutely. The, what Tony's trying to do is just make, make it so it is recognized by the city council formally, and then, yes, we will publicize in a variety of places. And that includes even the sneaker net of people talking to people, saying we need people from various neighborhoods to put in an application. The reason that there is an application process is that our intent is to make sure that whoever we get on this, on this advisory committee, is involved with their neighborhood and can explain how they would communicate out and ensure that they were providing that, that level of representation, bringing the messages to, it's a two-way message approach as well. And just as we will be looking for advice from the variety of neighborhoods that make up Des Moines, we will also, that'll be another way by which we share information.
So obviously, some of the issues that we will be talking about is, is Citizen Advisory Council the name you want to give this? Are you comfortable with the section on terms? Would you like them to be longer, shorter? One thing I want to point out that is in Title IV of the City Code, with regards to council-appointed committees, it does say that unless, said in a different part of the code, anyone who's appointed to a, a committee, this, or a Human Services, or Senior Services Advisory, or the Arts Commission, can only serve two consecutive terms, and then must sit out for two years before they can be put back on the same committee. So I didn't say anything about that in this draft, so that obviously would mean that rule would apply to this group. But if you want it different, then we need to say so in here. In particular, Section 7, the scope of duties, please give that a good, long, hard look, make sure this is the sort of things you want these folks to do. And then, and I skipped over the composition of the committee. We have one from each of our recognized planning area and neighborhoods, and then two from the business community, and one from the marina tenants. So if there's no major issues or questions, we'll just schedule it for upcoming council meeting.
Mayor Pretend Pennington.
Just a clarification on the number of folks.
Yep.
Is, you've got the alternates, so is the expectation that the alternates will attend the meeting as well, or?
I think that would be up to the alternates. The idea would be those who are the regular members would sit at the table and be the participants, asking the questions. The alternates could show up and sit in the audience and listen. Or if they don't, they are in communication with the regular members, so they know what's going on, so if they have to do, go and fill in for them, they're able to do so. I think that's up to the alternate and the regular member.
Okay. The reason I ask is, we've got two from the Des Moines Business and, and one from the marina. I think, and I would propose increasing three from the businesses and two from the marina. I think our, our business, we have enough diversity and size of our businesses from, you know, the, the Panatoni, the project over there, to hotels, to, you know, individually-owned small restaurants, so, and other businesses. So I think, I think we might be a little shy on the, on the business owner piece, is my thought.
I think that's something that we can address.
I mean, we're just, that's why I'm asking for the clarification, if we're going to have, you know, 14 people or 24 people, you know.
Well, you know, that, that is one of the challenges, because if you have 24 people, it's, it's very hard to get a lot of things, you know, through a body of that size. Look at, look at the challenges we sometimes have with seven. So it's, it's, you know, but you do want to get a good swath of, of representation as well. So that's, that's the difficulty with it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Banks.
So you're asking for input, is that tonight, or via email, or both?
Both.
Okay. So earlier in my email, I asked the question about serving at, the pleasure of, or however this process comes about, and I don't know if I was absolutely clear with what your answer was.
So your question was, should we put something in that says, "The committee serves at the pleasure of the council." My response to you was, technically, that's understood, because the council at any time could dissolve the organization, this group, just by repealing the ordinance. However, the code doesn't allow the council just to randomly decide to remove somebody from a committee, but there is a section, if you go into, I think it's Section 4.24 of the City Code, it outlines the general provisions for council-appointed committees, and one of them is reasons that council would take action to remove somebody. And there are a variety of reasons, ethical issues, misbehavior issues, and the like. So there is the ability to remove someone for cause, but there's no ability to remove somebody simply because you've decided you don't like what they're telling you.
No, that wasn't the intent of my question.
Okay.
Tony, in that code that you were just referring to, can a city employee who resides in Des Moines, and they care and they want to be involved, but they are an employee, is that a conflict, or would that eliminate them from being qualified?
I would argue that is a conflict.
Okay.
But ultimately, it would be ours to determine, would it not?
I, I believe so. If you want to specifically say that, that an employee may be a member of this committee, and that is not considered a conflict, then we really should hard code that into this.
As long as they're a resident of the city.
Correct.
Right.
I'll leave that to the council to weigh in on. Any, any other comments?
Well, it'll come forward in a few weeks, then.
Everybody comfortable bringing it forward on the 28th agenda? Okay.
And then four more quick items. One, if you haven't driven south to 16th Street between 24th and Pack Highway, the project has started, and we're doing, is we are doing the part, the, the work on the northern side of the street first, and then when that's all done, we'll shift over to the south side. Traffic is a little tight. You will see that taking your left turn from the, going eastbound on 216th into the Safeway is no longer allowed, even though we've had a few people cheating. But what we have done is on the work zone, we've set it up that when you go up to Pack Highway, you now can do a U-turn and go back in to make that left-hand, to make now a right-hand turn into the Safeway parking lot. So we appreciate everyone's patience. We knew this was going to be a tight and a difficult project because of the narrowness of what we have and how much that has traveled. So please, please give us your patience, we're working as quickly as we can. Speaking of Pack Highway, during the summertime, PSC is going to be out repainting all the light poles. It's the first time they've gone out and repainted all of them in one season in 12 years. So you'll be seeing that, and that may dis- So, you'll be seeing that, and that may disrupt traffic a little bit, but hopefully, not too much. Third, the FAA project has actually started. They got what we're calling a rough clearing and grading permit, and if you go up to the, the property that's across the street from the post office and the senior center, you will see that the trees are starting to come down, and the vegetation's being removed. That is the initial part of the clearing and grading. There'll be a more detailed clearing and grading permit issued later. And a formal groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled for June 7th, that's a Tuesday, at 1:30 in the afternoon, and I don't know if the GSA wanted us to do this, but I'm saying if you want to take part in that, at least watch the dignitaries with their golden shovels turn a couple shovelfuls of dirt, come on down. And then, finally, I want to turn over the microphone to Dan for the last item.
So, a couple of weeks ago, we mentioned about the award that we received for the American Public Works Association, Washington State Chapter, Project of the Year Award for the Saltwater Bridge. Here, here it is, here. We've applied on a number of projects for this award, and have never gotten it. We've received a lot of awards over the years on various city projects, but a few of them are here, but this one is a big deal. They give, they have about four categories that they award projects for, through the entire state, state, county, and city projects. This year, we got the only project for structures, so that's a pretty cool, pretty cool deal. So, the, the thing that I'm most proud of about this award isn't the award itself or the project, it's the reason for the award, and it's the, the work that Andrew and our consultants did on this project to save the taxpayers between $3 and $4 million on a adaptive change that they made through the design, and so that's a big deal. So, anyway, just wanted to show you the award.
Thanks, Dan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Please extend the congratulations to all of the team.
And that's my report, Your Honor. Did you want to mention anything about the trail being open again? Oh, yes, thank you very much. If you haven't walked the Des Moines Creek Trail in the last 24 hours, it is now officially opened. WashDOT finally showed up and made the repair to the cap that was on one of the struts that was holding up the bridge, and we were able to reopen it. So, thank you for, I know, pushing WashDOT, because they kept telling us, "Ah, it's not a big idea, eh, don't worry about it, eh, we'll get to it when we get to it." Well, they finally got to it.
Well, the clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of vouchers, and that concludes the consent agenda, Your Honor.
This is two weeks in a row, and does anybody, would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Don't move to approve it.
Is there a second? Oh, a motion made by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Takes us forward to new business, Local Government 101, Part 7A, Police, with our Police Chief, Mr. George Delgado.
And, and let me state, while we're calling it 7A, Part 7 is public safety, and Part A, public safety, is police. Part B will be the courts, the prosecutor, and public defense.
Personally, I thought it was because I was so long-winded, that they were gonna split it up in segments, but it wasn't it. Let's see here, mouse here to... Okay. Citizens at home, citizens in the audience that don't know me, my name is George Delgado, I'm your Chief of Police, and it's an honor and a privilege to be here today to talk to you, not only from a 101 perspective, but just to kind of give you an update on what's going on with public safety, the Police Department in your city. And this presentation was put together by the staff, so it was a collaborative effort. Many topics, many issues, many challenges that we thought about as we put it together, but what we felt is, the ones that are in here now are ones that we're gonna build on. The intent of this presentation isn't just the few minutes you're gonna get here, half hour, however long it takes, but to build on it, and part of what Tony began with the Communications Plan, and in my communication with council, what we want to do is, is start here, and if, during the course of this presentation, you have questions, comments, ideas, I ask that you get ahold of us at the Police Department, communicate with the council member, City Manager's Office, and with your ideas, thoughts, criticisms, whatever it may be, and get them to us, so we can address those. And again, this is, this is the start of a larger project that we want to do with the community, to inform, but also to give some direction, because we get a lot of comments about how, how can we support the Police Department? Well, this is gonna be a start to that, so thank you all. Purposes of the presentation, obviously, to provide an overview of the department, how we process calls for service, to talk about a police investigation, a case, what happens when it, someone calls, requests service, either through 911 or through a call, just to ask a question at the Police Department, and also, finally, to address the challenges we're facing, that many of you are concerned with, council's worked collaboratively with us to, to address some small fixes, many of them, long-term fixes. I want to talk about the total FTEs we have right now. This shows the total FTEs for the Des Moines Police Department. Commission Officer count includes patrol, detectives, the professional standards sergeant, the administrative division sergeant, the commanders, and our school resource officer. Civilian personnel include community service officers, animal control officers, evidence technician, records personnel, our office manager, and our executive secretary. We have eight wonderful volunteers helping us along the way, and many more, eight official volunteers, let me put it that way, and many more volunteers that have stepped up in small ways and big ways, and, and, well, let me rephrase that, no small ways, small. People give a lot of time, and they really care, and we really appreciate it. I want to start out with this slide. The red line you see is a trend line, and the line that you see in yellow represents FTEs and population going back to 2000. And as you can see, there's a, there's a downward trend, and you can see the blip, you can see right about the time the layoffs occurred, around the levy, the challenges we had there. So, you can see the population counts growing consistently, and the major fluctuation we've had with the FTEs, and we had a citizen nail it with regards to the number of FTEs we have right now. In 2000, we had seven more officers than we currently have in 2016. We're currently operating at 1995 FTE level, so basically, 32 FTEs, what we had in 1995. So, I present this, and, and I want to state that the, we took these statistics, which we report every year to WASPIC, from the WASPIC website, so you can find those. WASPIC is the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. They have statistics on staffing, not only for our department, but for departments throughout the state, and it's a good way for us to gather information, we do frequently. But this is a slide, just not to create fear, not to create controversy, but just to share where we are. It's a challenge that is being addressed, not only by the Police Department, but council, the directors, but the challenge here is providing appropriate, proper police services, and maintaining overall services for our city in a way that keeps us safe. And I'm sure there'll be questions about this slide or comments, we can come back to that later. This is an organization chart. What we have here is the chief and support services commander, which is Commander Bull, operations commander, Commander Sellers. Under operations, you notice the patrol teams, and that's only the patrol teams, but under the operations division, what we have is overall management, the operations, consisting of 21 personnel, which, as you can see, as you can understand, gets cumbersome when you start talking about LNI issues, staffing issues, overtime issues, emergency response, calls at any given time that we have an officer in the hospital due to injury, any other type of emergency comes up, is handled by the operations commander. Provides directed patrol based off crime trends and traffic concerns, so part of his responsibilities is to make sure that those crime trends are being reviewed, that we have, are addressing them properly, but also making sure that we evaluate the number of issues that we have and address them in a timely manner, focusing on those that are life and safety priorities due to the staffing, nature of the staffing that we have. He conducts use-of-force reviews. Use-of-force reviews are very important. With every arrest that's made, with every fight that we get into, with every arrest that's made, where we put hands on people, a report is generated. But it's not only the report, it's in-car video that happens from that. There are a number of checks and balances that we use, not only to do the job right and maintain our level of professionalism, but to, to ensure accountability, to, to ensure transparency, to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing legally, that we're being, doing it compassionately, and in a timely manner, and again, to maintain that level of professionalism. And, and for both of them, and for, for me, and for most of my staff, it's continual review of department policies, to make sure we're up to date, to make sure we maintain accreditation standards, that's everyone's job, but also to make sure, again, that we are meeting our, our vision, goals, and the level of professionalism and the responsibility that we have to our community. Explors and recommends alternative delivery services. Of course, in times where staffing is thin, that's a vital issue, that, that's something that we have to do every day. With every request that comes in for police services, and as you can imagine, there are many on a daily basis, either it's passed on through a citizen, a council member, or our records division, through a phone call, we look at every single one of them, assess them. Some of them are easy to handle, some are very complex, so it takes quite a bit of time to evaluate those things, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the citizens, again, and that we're not placing anybody at risk. And also, finally, to create operational plans, operational plans like for the parade 4th of July, there's a lot of, of risk management that goes into those plans, a lot of laws, a lot of collaboration and partnerships with community and other law enforcement agencies that has to occur, and all that is put together with an operations plan that takes months and months to prepare. Number of meetings, making sure we maintain budget guidelines, but also that we're placing people in positions that ensure the safety of a community. Under support services, you have accreditation. Our support services manager, Bob Bull, is our accreditation manager, and I will say, recognized in the state now as one of the top accreditation managers, has recently helped our jail become the first accredited jail in the state. Not an easy task. He did it by managing his workload here, here every day, and able to mentor and, and get our jail to a level that no other jail has achieved, so kudos to Bob on that. Also oversees the management of the entire support services division, which is 17 personnel, oversees training and development, training and equipment, I should say, serves as accreditation managers, I stated, provides continual review of department policies, and this is really the area that the support services commander really has to focus on, because it ties into the accreditation piece, so we have to make sure that those policies are reviewed by staff in a timely manner, that anything that needs to be addressed with regards to any changes, any implementation of new policy, upgrades, whatever happens, occurs in a timely manner. Serves compliance with federal crime reporting through NIBERS and the Washington Access, Washington State Patrol Access, and I knew I should have put the definition in NIBERS. Trust me, it's, it's a long acronym that won't mean much other, it's a reporting system that we have to do, that's handled through Bob's division and Terri Ann, our office manager. And access is, is a significant accreditation, or significant piece that has to be done that, that our agency wasn't always in compliance with because of a number of issues we had, partly records that we had at Iron Mountain that are no longer there, and kudos to, to Terri Ann and her staff for making sure that we got all those records out of there, we have a process in place to get into compliance, that we met those, obviously, we became accredited, so that team really worked hard to, to ensure that happens, and it did. He also oversees our pre-employment and background promotional process, oversees the speed automation program, the school zone cameras, and the soon-to, the coming soon, other cameras that are coming, that I'll let somebody else talk about later, but also serves as the department's facility manager. So, anything that has to happen in the department, upgrades, upgrades, and engineering, all that other stuff, happens in that division, so, as you can see, quite busy, and that, that doesn't really touch it. What I did is, I took five to seven bullet points out of quite a few, so let me get on to the other stuff now. Operations Division, basically patrol, the people that you see on the street every day, the average team, each team should consist of a sergeant, four officers. The patrol teams work three days on, three days off, 12-hour shifts. Those shifts go from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening for the day shift, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM for the night shift. Because of a number of challenges, happening in every, any department, really, but for our department right now, we've had as low as two officers and a sergeant, we've had, when we're fortunate to have four officers, we have those. What we've done, and what our, give a lot of credit to my sergeants for, is communicating with neighboring agencies, and they watch our back. In the event something significant happens, we know we're gonna get help, but obviously, one of the, the major goals that we have is to increase that staffing and look for ways of doing it, and it is a full-time job, and one job that we have been working more than anything with council collaboratively, and, and with the other directors collaboratively, collaboratively on. So, it's an issue that's everyone's concern, and as you can see, the 12-hour shifts listed here, that's if everything goes smoothly. So, if you can imagine, 12-hour shifts, you make an arrest at 5:00 with a suspect that all of a sudden has to go to jail to get, I'm sorry, has to go to the hospital, we're gonna have to take that person to the hospital, we're gonna have to wait for them to be evaluated, released, and then go down to the jail and book them, so a 12-hour shift can turn into a 14, 16-hour shift. Very, very challenging, but it's something that our team does, our teams do on a regular Support Services Division, which is, which are detectives, we have a detective, four sergeants, and evidence technician. We have somebody Monday through Friday working. The big thing here is the 156 cases. Is that unusual? No, it's not unusual, it's significant. Des Moines is, is a small town, and many people recognize that Des Moines is a small town, but we're a small ci, we're a small town in Seattle, so we're, we're in essence a busy precinct in South Seattle. December, up to, December to date, three homicides. So, those cases, one in particular will take, we're up to 20 interviews, 12 search warrants, take a significant amount of time. So, when you're working three, and you have four sergeants, four detectives and a sergeant doing it, those cases take up a significant part of their day, and oftentimes, the weekends that they're in doing that, too. So, the other cases that they have, at times have to be put on hold, quite often have to be put on hold, but very, very busy. The cases involve interviews, trips, in other words, if we have to chase a suspect or a witness down to another county, that may take the entire day, and it just may be the entire day just to do that, so very time-intensive cases. So very time-intensive cases. The average caseload per detective is thirty, and up to forty-six cases for, in one case, currently. We do felony cases, misdemeanors, domestic violence, adult protective service cases, child protective service cases, and missing persons cases. With the latter, three, many state guidelines, federal guidelines that we have to deal with in those cases. So quite a bit of time spent on those. We have to do certain things. But we have detectives assigned to those specifically. We do a lot of work with Des Moines City Prosecutor, and the city legal provides a ton of support for us. The majority of the work that the Investigations Division does, oops, sorry, is done through the King County Prosecutor's Office. We work with the King County Prosecutor and King County Court on these major felony cases. And the other thing that we have, of course, that we do is sex offender verification. That's required by state for us to do. Records Unit consists of one supervisor, our Office Manager, and five record specialists. They work twenty-four-seven operation to support everyday operations of the Police Department. They handle the front office, the lobby, assist officers for information over radio access verification, which means that if an officer is in the field with a person and they run the person's name and date of birth, there's a warrant. That warrant has to be verified, it has to be pulled. There are certain timelines that we have to follow for that. And you have to be access certified, access to certified, which our records clerks are to do. So they, it's not uncommon to come into the Police Department and have our record staff on the phone, dealing with somebody in the lobby, and having an officer or a detective waiting by the records vault to access a record. One of the busiest functions in the Police Department on an average. And so takes, takes a ton of time, but a very essential function for us to do. And there are, the major functions that they do are the incident-based reporting, which is information taken from the reports, data entering the records management system, which is our records management system that we use to do our reports and input all our information on a daily basis for the Police Department. Reprocess warrants, court orders, concealed pistol licenses, pet licenses. They do transcriptions. In other words, the twenty statements that I talked about, that the detectives did, those are added to the load of our records unit that they do. They maintain records per the state retention schedule, which is also a very, very important task that has to be addressed on a very, pretty much on a daily basis because of the number of records that we have. Professional Standards Unit, that's, on TV they call it the Internal Affairs. Consists of one sergeant. That sergeant's primary duties are to maintain department personnel records, make sure we're up to date and legal on those, deal with complaints, do internal investigations, internal audits. Internal audits may mean going into record, going into the evidence unit and making sure that our evidence is accounted for, processed properly, that we're disposing of evidence when we're supposed to, we're disposing of weapons when we're supposed to, and that evidence that's required to be there for specific cases is there. Background, the Professional Standards Division Sergeant also deals with the background investigations, which can be extremely timely, is our public information officer for any information. We get media inquiries on a regular basis, and also runs our volunteer program, which includes doing the backgrounds on the volunteers, doing training, whatever the training may be, and being the liaison between the volunteer and the program that the volunteer is assisting with. Training Sergeant, consists of one sergeant, is the training development, a training coordinator for the agency. Big job. When we, when I arrived here, there were a number of deficiencies in this area. When Commander Bull was put into that position, one of the things we did with the assistance of our training sergeants is make sure that all essential training was put into place. First aid, emergency vehicle operations, firearms, and defensive tactics. Some of those things we were very, we hadn't done in a while. We had to get those going again. We looked at our training budget and made sure that the training we were doing was essential training and not training that was nice to do, so to speak, obviously, that would enhance police operations. But we went down to the bare bone, and we're doing the required training that we need to do the job. Procurement inventory, department equipment. Equipment changes all the time, breaks, becomes obsolete. We have to make sure that we have equipment that is functional and in the field when the officers are needing, are in need of it. This sergeant also provides direct supervision of the School Resource Officer, becomes the liaison to the schools. Very important position, a lot of issues in the schools, a lot of demands on the School Resource Officer, and oftentimes it requires our Admin Sergeant to be the liaison and to make sure that we're not burning our officer out and that they're using him in the right way. Our Animal Control Officer is also supervised by the Training Sergeant, Administration Sergeant. Animal Control is a little bit more than the old adage, the old dog catcher. Our Animal Control, we probably have one of the best animal control officers in the state, in my opinion. She is animal detective, animal officer, information officer, animal educator, wears a number of hats with regards to outreach to citizens with animals and pets, but also makes sure the community is safe from aggressive animals. And that's probably one of the busiest functions she has, but also taking care of animals that are stray and putting them in the right places, spends a lot of time doing that. Our Community Service Officers do community outreach and education and code enforcement. The code enforcement piece is a new evolving piece that they're doing, that's been added to their workload. So what's happening with that is we're doing an evaluation on what outreach projects we continue to do, what projects we freeze, and what will discontinue. I'm sorry, we're not going to discontinue anything. We're going to freeze them, we're going to reassess them, and some we are going to continue to do. But we're also looking at what code enforcement issues we are going to do in partnership with Public Works because what we're doing now, and with the help of Public Works and Danbury specifically, getting upgrades to a system that will allow us to be more efficient in how we handle code enforcement complaints and how they're addressed in a more timely manner. However, because of the challenges that we have, we are having to streamline all facets of their, of their job duties, but looking at ways of maintaining efficiencies to serve our community. So at this point, I get into calls for service, and that happens to be our Animal Control Officer, Jan. Where does it start? Dispatch receives calls for service, and when you call nine-one-one, that's the voices that you hear are the dispatchers. Valleycom is our dispatch center. Valley Communications is in Kent, and they handle a number of agencies that contract them for dispatch services. When a citizen picks up the phone and dials nine-one-one, their call is routed to the nearest public safety access point, also referred to as a P S A. For the city of Des Moines, that's going to be Valleycom. There's a call receiver that asks questions, obtain the most pertinent information, and what, direct the call to whatever service is needed for dispatch. The information is then relayed to the dispatcher, and the call is made, the call is received by the, by the officer. So this, you call nine-one-one, there's going to be a delay because when you call Valleycom, it goes to a call receiver. The call receiver takes all the information and then directs it to the dispatcher, the dispatcher then puts it out. So sometimes, depending on how busy they are, there may be a one or two-minute lag in us receiving the call. If it's a significant call, they'll tone it out, as you see, they'll beep it out to the officer on an important call, a violent call, so to speak, gun call, robbery type of thing, active crime. And then they'll gather the information as they're putting it out to us for, for response. So as far as police response, once the officers are dispatched to the scene, they make an assessment to determine what role they'll need to take to preserve safety and well-being. For large numbers, for a large number of our calls, the officer responds, will bring, they basically bring stability, coordinate services. So officer arrives, we'll make a quick assessment of what the officer has. Is it a call that was improperly dispatched? And that happens once in a while where, because of the, the nature of the trauma that the caller goes through, it may be, you know, maybe something that it's not. So we take the information really quickly, and it's really important for the first officer on scene to gather as much information about what's going on and either upgrade the call to add more officers or downgrade it, basically saying, oh, I can handle this, I've got enough here. Or we got one body down, we got two bodies down, we got an active fight going on, I need more people. This is a very critical time for the officers to make assessments, and it's one of the most dangerous times when an officer arrives to the call. But ultimately, our hope is to be able to handle the call and provide reassurance to the citizen making the complaint or the call requesting service. You know, we're mediators, we complete reports, social workers even, arrest offenders, and provide referral information. And that referral information piece is, is really the, the important part. When a caller makes a call to nine-one-one, yes, they want us to come and do our job, but they want to know that they're going to be safe afterward. And that's a really important piece for us, is they want to know they're going to be safe, they want to know what to do should this happen again, they want to know that it's going to be all right. One of the challenges that a department with a busy call load has, when we're really busy, is oftentimes our window for offering that reassurance gets really small. It's dangerous. So we do the best we can, but that's probably one of the, the most important pieces to, to closing out a call, so to speak. Major crime scenes and Critical Collision Service, Critical Collision Investigations. High-risk calls, as well as major crimes, may require a call out of supervisory personnel and potentially our Investigations Unit. It's very common for our detectives to request the assistance of the FBI, Washington State Patrol, or other appropriate agencies to assist in the collection of forensic evidence in major crimes. And those are the ones where, once we get to a scene, you'll see a white van or two pull up. There'll be lights if it goes all night, they'll be collecting evidence, they'll be gathering information, talking to people. Most of the time in these cases, they're measuring and collecting evidence, packaging it up on scenes, making measurements. And we'll have our officers on scene acting as liaisons on these. But it's not uncommon, and we have them, we're fortunate in our county to have the FBI Seattle Field Office be so cooperative, extremely cooperative, but also WSP and our neighboring agencies, I can't, I can't ignore them. And I'll sum it up by saying this on this slide, it's through these strong working relationships that our detectives are able to reconstruct the crime scene, put together, put forward to the prosecutor the recommendation of charges. And I will tell you that the, the work that our detectives do, despite the challenges they have with caseloads, it's not uncommon for us to get feedback from the King County Prosecutor's Office on the work that a detective did in a case, or what they've done in the, in testifying of a case, but also in the caring of witnesses. That's something that is quite commonly I hear from our prosecutors. Our officers don't have to do that, but they care for the witnesses, they make sure they get to court, they make sure they get home okay, they make sure they have reassurance. So I'm very proud of them for the compassion they show in those cases. As far as our evidence goes, items collected from a crime scene, lost or found properties, CD, DVDs, digital evidence, and many other items are required to be bagged, tagged, and labeled to provide for the proper chain of evidence. They have to have the proper, storage of evidence is so critical and could go a number of ways, and none of them positive if it's not done correctly. Any breach of protocol in evidence handling can have a detrimental impact on the integrity of the criminal case and may result in prosecutor's inability to pursue charges. Our Evidence Technician is responsible for maintaining the inventory of the evidence room and entering the information into records database. Responsible of regular audits that are conducted, again, our admin, or Professional Standards Sergeant conducts those audits. But that's to make sure that we have the evidence that we need in there, that we've disposed of evidence, and that the evidence room is in the condition that it's supposed to be in, to make sure that no evidence is contaminated. One of the other things our Evidence Tech does, though, above and beyond what Evidence Techs in the past have done, is they do lab entries, they handle all the lab entries. Any, any evidence that has to be measured, sampled, marijuana drugs, whatever it may be, methamphetamine, heroin, PCP, even guns for print, have to be taken down to the lab. They're met, they're examined, and she brings them back, then assigns them for officers to do further investigation or provides them information that will allow them to close their investigations. But a very, very sensitive job that Catherine Agnew, our Evidence Tech, does a wonderful job with. Reports. Once the situation is contained, it is important for our officers to document what has occurred. This step is vital to ensuring that criminal charges are communicated to the Prosecutor's Office in as much detail as possible. In certain circumstances, our officers may need to complete additional supplementary reports. Examples of this would be officers' reports, use of force reports, collision reports, evidence reports, DUI reports, and in custody charging sheets, among many others. Now, keep in mind, all these reports, we may pull a case from a case file that's this thick, will be a case that's just a week old. By the time we get done investigating, investigations may have multiple binders on an entire shelf with one case. And all this is work that goes in by the officers, it has to be done in a timely manner because once we take this to court, we're on the clock. We have to complete certain things within that timeline, or we lose the case, and criminal could be released into, back into our communities. So appreciate the dedication of our folks and the success they've had in making those cases stick and putting people that are victimizing communities in prison. So the supervisory review, when an officer's completed their reports, they submit them for the sergeant. Sergeant reviews them, checks them, makes sure they're complete and accurate. They also conduct a policy review, and any supplemental reports to deter, and ask for supplemental reports to determine if they need to be routed to command staff or Professional Standards for additional documentation. Once the reports have been reviewed and approved, they're forwarded on to the records unit for entry into the records database, or routing to detectives or to the courts. Another important task that our records division does, and I'll get to them in a minute, but making sure those timelines are met, making sure a report doesn't fall through the cracks is extremely vital. The officers count on those things to be done. And our records clerks not only do that, they are a source of accountability for us. So the slide up for the records unit could have been like ten slides alone for what they do. But I'll stick to the script, that way I don't, keep us here a lot longer than I'm already keeping us here. Once a report arrives in the records unit, it's processed in a number of ways. A record specialist will handle the data entry into the records database. They're the frontline in records management, ensuring that the department is in compliance with the many regulations related to the records retention. The record specialist also handles statistical reporting to the FBI for crime data tracking. They must also enter the information related to stolen articles, warrants, orders, and other critical information into the WSP access database so that other agencies that we rely on will have access to that same information. And that could be how we find a serial bank robber, rapist, what have you. After data entry is complete, the case files are filed, maintained, and the cases required for additional follow-up are sent out for additional investigation. And the retention of the cases, there's a number of schedules for retention, but again, something we rely on our records units to, to maintain, and that's a critical task. The picture you see there are files. These are case files that were taken from Iron Mountain that eventually, are they, is that correct, Terri Ann? And those, more work that our records unit has done, and that's not even, that's just a few of them. There's been volumes brought in, and we've scanned them, we've, through the archives, scheduling and destruction schedules, all that other stuff, we've gotten rid of a lot of those things. But the goal there is to increase efficiency, become accessible. We've gotten rid of a lot of those things. But uh the goal there is to increase efficiency, become uh access compliant and to uh reduce the cost of keeping those things stored at Iron Mountain.
Chief.
Yes.
So your data entry into records management system and the entry into the WSP, is that the same information?
Um, no, it could be different. It, it can be, but it's not. Some of, WASP may uh, or the WSP access could be more of the um, the person's information. Um, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stress her out.
Well, well, here, here's my point, Terri Ann. If, if there's information going into data, the, the records management and then the WSP and they're the same, is that two separate times you have to enter that data? Or are they linked?
Why don't you come up here, Terri Ann, and take the mic 'cause it's recorded? That's why I brought the tea.
It's actually two separate times. The access into the records management system is the case in its entirety. The victim's name, where it occurred, when it occurred, which officers responded, et cetera. The information that gets added into the WSP access database is only key portions of the case. A stolen vehicle, the information on the vehicle, when it was stolen, what's the case number? And then that goes out to Washington Agencies and National. Cause if it goes over into Portland, Oregon, they wanna be able to run that car and see that it's stolen. It includes stolen guns, missing persons, all that type of stuff. Um, warrants for arrest, orders, stuff like that. That's what the WSP access is about. So it's only key portions. Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
You see why I meant it could be seven slides or more? It, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of information. And it's, it's, it's a critical, critical area that we uh, that many agencies can, can find themselves in their grease with, you know, i- if it's not done correctly. Detective follow-up. Detectives follow up on a variety of cases, and those are a few of them listed in the slide. Everything from burglaries to homicides. They receive the initial case reports in which the responding officers document what they observed, collected, and processed. The detectives work to gather the evidence, the facts in the case that have been forwarded to them for follow-up. Follow-up can include interviewing potential suspects, examining records, and apprehending criminals. Detectives will work on specific cases until they've solved or closed a case due to other circumstances. And basically, we follow until we have prosecution or we have no other leads to go on. Uh, detectives will submit warrant requests to the courts and forward recommended charging documents to the prosecutor. Uh, they are also many times required to testify in a trial. And that alone, depending on the type of trial, will unplug the detective from any duties they're doing because they're, they're required to be fresh and ready to testify. And testifying in court could be grueling.
What's the oldest open case we have?
Commander Bull? Off the top of your head, do you know the oldest case we have on, that's open case?
I do not know. Uh, as far as, I know we have so, unsolved homicides, we have, we have.
Yeah. That's a good question. I, I, we don't have an answer for you on that.
I wanna say it's back about nineteen seventy-six. It was a homicide. But then we also do have one outstanding Green River missing person case.
So nineteen seventy-six would be one that we're talking about. So again, once you start looking at the complexity of the work that they do, and that picture there i- is a current picture. Though each one of those is, is, is one binder in a case. All these could be the same case. What these are, these are, you can't see them here, but they're uh information on the people that we've talked to. So there are quite a few numbers and names on the, on these charts. And this chart is a link chart that links who the p, who these suspects are, who they may be connected with, where they've gone. But uh this is one room that the, the detectives use to, to have all the extra information, so it's off their desk. So quite a complex information, uh operation. And they have to make sure that they're aware of where every piece of that information is. It's more of what I've talked about with, with regards to what the detectives will do on a given day. And, and this, like I said, sometimes they're required and they'll come in. I'll come in on a weekend and I'll find a detective in their cubicle because it's quiet and there's nobody interrupting them getting their work done. Um, because if you take a day off, the work is not gonna get done when you're a detective and got a significant caseload. And I'll close with talking about our challenges. I'm just gonna put them up there. The non-commissions additional staff, public disclosures, patrol overtime, patrol teams required operate for minimum op, operating at minimum standards, the caseload of the detectives we talked about, maintaining accreditation, uh Criminal Justice Training Commission training mandates that we have to continue to do, uh future potential requirements. A third of our commissioned officers are eligible for retirement in a couple of years. Um, many of them are there now but choosing to continue to work um and are great officers. Uh, the last one is the one that every agency is facing, specifically ours, uh hiring qualified applicants, making sure that uh we are competitive with other agencies. Uh, some of them offering bonuses. Um, don't know why they do that, but uh they do. Uh, but it's, it's very time-consuming and costs a lot. Here, we have the number for, this is the cost of hiring a, a new officer, and these are the timelines. So we, we just can't put out a now hiring sign. Uh, there are a number of uh timelines that go into hiring an officer. And you could, it's hard to see here, but it, it, this is lateral officer in red. So lateral officer is an officer that's currently an officer in another police agency. Um, and then the first three months, what we're doing here is doing a peer board. Peer board and backgrounds are the very first things we do. We bring them in and, and, and uh qualified group of officers will sit and talk to them about uh what their goals are, what their purpose is, and why, uh ask more about their background. Uh, then we do the rest of them. These are all the initial things that happen, culminate with a chief's interview. Once that's, uh for, for a lateral officer, about a thousand dollars, and that, that means time and, and salaries, overtime's, whatever. Once that's done and we hire them, they get into the field training piece. And for officers, that'll be about four months on a lateral officer. And these are all uh cost. Uh, some of them include overtime costs, whatever else, uh to make that happen. And uh costs are based on our current pay skills. So that, that's for a lateral officer. That's for an acca, academy graduate officer. Academy graduate officer is, is simply a new officer that is a ca, uh, an academy graduate that doesn't necessarily, for some reason didn't make probation or ha, for some reason uh is not currently working for the agency that originally hired them, but is out there and, and capable of doing the job. Then we do the same thing. We'll put them through the same uh paces with regards to uh selection. Um, and they get into field training. They do, this one requires a little bit more field training because they are new. Uh, and once they get into the field, the seven months piece there at the bottom is, is a probationary time until they're off, actually off on their own and, and functioning as an actual officer. Here is a timeline and the cost for a new hire officer, an entry. Takes a lot longer because we, we start with the civil service process. Um, every agency does. We, we have to do the testing and all the, we gather a list from the uh civil service of qualified candidates. Once that's done, then we put them through their uh department paces with the eligibility, background, polygraph, the whole enchilada. Then we uh offer them employment if they're so willing. Big challenge we have right now is academy wait time. Uh, Washington State Training Commission uh is looking at significant cuts from the state, which is gonna put us way behind in getting qualified candidates into the academy. Uh, and we've been working with Su, Surar at the academy to try and get ahold of our uh electors in Olympia to try and free up money for training. Uh, but it's become a real big challenge for, for the state to fund CJTC, the Criminal Justice Training Commission. Uh, so what they're having to do is cut back on the number of classes they can offer. So the waiting time uh is significant. And the problem we have with, with this is that we have to give them a name in order to hold a slot. We just can't say, can you hold two for next year? We'll have them. They need a name. So it, 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 it's a challenge for both of us in that we have to hire the person and have them. So in, in this case, if we were to hire them, then we have the academy training. We have wait time. So in this wait time, they could be here doing the miscellaneous services for us, filing, doing whatever, assisting detectives, what have you. Then we send them to the academy for five months. And there's a cost for that. There's a, includes a eight hundred dollar cost for the academy and uh other costs that go along with it. So basically, we, we have them on the books, but they're not here of any use to us because they're in the academy. Yes, ma'am?
Um, chief, during the SCORE meeting, they highlighted this issue about the academy. And there was also a comment made that they could petition the state or, I'm not sure, State Patrol, someone, to do their own academy training. What, what, what does that entail?
A lot of money. Very, very costly venture. Uh, and what they're talking about there is, is uh because SCORE is a business, basically, because they, they can do something a little different in partnership with other jails in the region to try and, and coordinate initial training. Uh, and they would just have to send them at that point to the academy for the certification process. But a much different process than what we're doing here. Uh, but something that they definitely have a, a budget for and the logistical uh ability to do. So a, again, as you can see, much longer. We're talking about nineteen months now from the time we uh get them off the list to, till we put them on the road at a cost of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions or, or comments? Sir?
The, the part with the jail, I just wanted to, those are correction officers and not police officers.
Yes. Yeah, that is two different things. Yeah, two different academies. They're at CJTC. But you have the corrections, academy has their own side. And then the uh law enforcement, police officer, sheriff has, we have our own side.
Thanks, chief, and thanks for your time last week getting me educated on all this. It was a real eye-opener. So a couple of questions. You did mention in dangerous situations, we've got backup from neighboring cities. But then you did tell me that not all of our neighboring cities are on the same radio frequency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So Normandy Park isn't on our frequency, so they couldn't back us up, even though they might be the closest?
No. What's, what has saved us in the past is um, as always, our, our records clerks that hear the call come out and they'll make a call over there, or a supervisor will request a call be made. Those are the calls that we have a little bit more time on. Uh, two years ago, we had a homicide uh off of uh Des Moines Memorial Road. Uh, there wasn't that time to call them. So we got there, established our perimeters. We got our investigators there before they knew we were even there. So that kinda highlights the, the, the challenge that we have when you have two agencies that can't talk to each other.
Yeah.
So very, very challenging.
Yeah. And then the other thing that was really highlighted to me uh during our tour and our talk was what our volunteers do. I just can't applaud them enough. So uh question, do you need more volunteers?
Yes, yes, we need more volunteers. Yes, I find it challenging because uh our, the training of our volunteers falls on, it, it's a time-intensive thing. Uh, we start off with the background, but it also requires us to train them because the jobs that they do are around sensitive material, uh dangerous situations at times. Um, there, it, it's, it's a long-term process. Uh, some things are easy. We've had some volunteers that have come in that are, they're former law enforcement, uh that have had familiarity working in law enforcement. Uh, and those are much easier to get in there. Currently have a, like I said, we're working on, on doing what we can to, to multiply that. But having volunteers also means managing volunteers.
Right.
Uh, and sometimes it's a challenge to um uh forecast what we will need, uh what, how many volunteers we can get in to address a specific issue. Uh, because most of the good-hearted volunteers we have have a number of areas that they give their time to. So um it, you know, it, it's challenging, but we're getting there.
And you had mentioned one volunteer that you guys went through all the training and time and prep to get them up to speed. And then they were a little bit uh uncommitted all of a sudden, and they couldn't show up when you needed them desperately and you had all that time invested. So my question is, if, if someone in the community would really like to volunteer and be a part, can you address and speak to the level of commitment and what you would expect from them if they did wanna step up to the plate?
Right. It, it, and that, that comes. There are a number of functions that happen. And we'd like to know, ba, uh, uh, the real basic is, can you offer us two, four, five hours a week, one day a week, uh and, and just make that agreement? Because really, we have to go off of what the volunteer can offer us.
Sure.
Uh, once the volunteers are there, then, and we address the needs of the department, oftentimes they flex their time to meet those needs for us. And that's really how we've gotten to where we are with regards to uh the larger tasks that the volunteers handle, is getting in there, getting their feet wet, so to speak, and then go ahead and rolling up their sleeves and taking on more.
That's awesome. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Hey, uh, wait a second. We're not gonna get off easy. Um, I have a couple of quick, quick items. Um, when, when you talk about ValleyCom and nine one one, you know, first of all, before I ask a question, I wanna stress that I'm absolutely advocating for everybody, if you have an emergency, to call nine one one. But for situations where people, citizens wanna communicate to our law enforcement about an issue, but it is not an emergency, life-threatening, or active crime, is nine one one the best number for them to use? And why? What would be the alternative if, if it wasn't?
If, well, first of all, if they have a question, they can call the police department. And we, we can go online and get that number. What's eight, seven, eight? Three, three oh one. I'm sorry. Got a lot of numbers going through my head right now. Uh, and our, our staff is real responsive, very responsive to them. Um, again, records understands, the record staff understands the different services. They address so many calls that they know the common answer, the, the general answers to many calls. So we can address a lot of those. So I'd start off with there. It's not uncommon to have our records clerk say, ma'am, can you hang up and call nine one one? That is an emergency. Or sir, that is an emergency. Um, or in some cases, even when there's a supervisor there, uh, we've handled getting the call dispatched and get out to the call as soon as we can.
Okay. Um, I think the important thing is for people to know that if you just have questions of law enforcement, the two oh six eight seven eight three three oh one is the ideal number to call.
Correct. Or a visit to our front lobby if they're in the area.
Stop on by and say hello?
Stop on by, say hello.
Okay. Um, the, the second thing I, I was hoping to get you to talk a little bit about is we have a foundation that supports our department. And um I think people would be interested in knowing a bit, a bit more about that. Um, you have the annual foundation event. Um, and I can, I know we're in the early stages, but I'm excited to see this grow.
Absolutely. And I'm gonna embarrass Ellie and have her come up and talk a little bit about the foundation because uh Ellie serves as the liaison to the foundation, which is a five oh one C three. So uh, come on up, Ellie. She's usually not that red. So uh, you're, do not tune your TVs at home. And her son's here, so I didn't embarrass her in front of her son.
Hello. Um, so currently I am serving on the Des Moines Police Foundation Board. Um, we are incorporated through the state of Washington as a nonprofit charity, a five oh one C three. So all contributions to us are tax deductible. Um, I have a couple of foundation board members here in the audience with me. Um, Chaplain Jeff Espeseth is serving as our liaison for the Chaplaincy Fund, um, which is one of the items that we have built to serve our community. Um, it's a benevolent fund um that we just started. Um, it's a collaboration with a lot of the congregations here in the community. Um, and some individual citizens have chosen to invest in it as well, as well as some of our council members here who have come to our um fundraising events and the city manager. Um, and basically what the concept is, is when the officers are out in the field and they come upon a situation that requires immediate crisis intervention, um where we can make an actual difference today, right now, and it's going to solve a problem. We have a fund set up within the police foundation where the officers can approach us and ask for that help. So for example, if they come into a home and the children there have no food, um, that's something the officers can solve right now. And um situations like a domestic violence case where we have um a shelter set up, but the shelter won't come until tomorrow. You know, we can't get them in there tonight. There's nowhere for, for them to go. They're not comfortable. for them to go, they're not comfortable staying in the house, that's a situation where the foundation could step forward and say, we will get you a hotel room for the night to cover you, to make sure you're in a safe place. So those are some of the ideas that we have going on. That's just one of our funds. Another fund that the foundation has set up is a benevolence fund or a bereavement fund for our officers. If there were something that were to occur and one of our officers were injured or killed in line of duty, it's a fund that's set up to be an immediate fund for their family members to be able to deal with funeral costs, travel costs, to bring family into town. I apologize for my voice, I'm sick. I'm not crying. Another part of our mission is trying to get technology and training to our officers for situations where there's a one-time cost that isn't covered in the city's budget, but it would have either an ability to leverage funds for the city, or the ability to make a difference again. If it's something that will be a game changer for us, but for some reason, we can't fit that into the general budget, the foundation has set aside a certain percentage of our funds to deal with those kind of grant requests from the officers. An example of that taking place is actually coming up here in June. One of our officers, Detective Jen Dro, is going to be traveling to Georgia. The city is not going to be paying anything but his travel funds to get there, so his airplane ticket to get to Georgia. The foundation has set up a grant, myself working it out with the Department of Homeland Security. So the Department of Homeland Security is covering his tuition while he's there, and what he'll bring back for the city of Des Moines is a Celebrite machine, which is forensic technology for him to be able to train our other detectives. So when they have a case where cell phones are involved, whether it's human trafficking, whether it's, you know, domestic violence, there's a lot of different cases where cell phones become a big game changer in the evidence that's presented. We'll now have the ability to do that here at the local level. We won't have to go to the State Patrol and wait three months to get the information back. So that's an example where the foundation was able to, even though we didn't even have to utilize money, but it was time to be able to get that available for the citizens of Des Moines and for the Des Moines Police Department without a huge cost to the city, because normally that training is eight thousand dollars. And so that was a pretty big accomplishment for us. Just trying to think. Some of our other really fun things, and what I'm really proud of, is some of the community outreach that we're doing. As we were just talking about, the community service officers and some of the other portions of the department, we're having to cut back a little bit in that area to deal with staffing needs and the needs of the city, where that's a chance for the foundation to step forward and help serve as a representative of the department. The foundation is made up of volunteers. Everybody that serves on the board is a volunteer member, nobody's paid, and it's just concerned community members that have come forward and said, I want to make a difference. And so this December, we held an event called Shop With a Cop, and it was a collaboration between the department and the police foundation. The police foundation did a fundraiser. We raised the money to take, I want to say it was fourteen different families, Christmas shopping, and we were able to team up with the firefighters, and each of the children was provided with a warm jacket, and they got to go home with gifts for their family, and their parents were also able to take home a gift for the child. And so that was a very touching event for both the children that were able to have Christmas and for our officers, because it was a great opportunity for them to be able to see the positive light of interacting with the public. And so, yeah. Are there any questions about the foundation?
Yes. So the best way for people to learn about the foundation and, you know, either ways to contribute or to get involved are?
We do have a website that we're running, www.demoinespolicefoundation.com. I try regularly to keep that updated, so that you can see the current events that we're working on, what our aspirational projects are, and then also all of our vital documents. So we're a hundred percent transparent. Even though we're not directly tied to the government, we do function with open transparency. So all of our documents are open and online. You can see everything. You can see our 990 forms that we report to the IRS. You can see everything down to the meeting minutes that we have when we have board foundation meetings. You can also make donations directly at the Des Moines Police Department, the foundation. You just address it directly to the foundation, and if there's a specific fund that you're wanting to donate to, for example, if you want to make a hundred dollar contribution, but you only want it to be used towards that chaplaincy fund, you can choose to earmark donations as well.
So you have annual fundraising events? How does someone learn about those? Is it off the website, through Destination Des Moines, possibly?
We haven't built a hundred percent coordination through the Destination Des Moines yet. They have been great partners in helping us get the website up. Jill Andrews with Destination Des Moines was a great help with that. But through the foundation website, we also have a Facebook account that we try to post when we have events coming up. We do a bake sale, and we're going to do that annually now in the farmer's market to help raise money for Shop With a Cop. And then as well, we do, we held the award ceremony. That's a closed event, but we are considering doing things like a breakfast, where members of the public would be invited as well to help raise money for the foundation. And so it's kind of just a project-by-project basis at this point for fundraising.
Well, it's going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing, chief, just want to put a note down. It's time to schedule the annual ride-along, and I would encourage my fellow council members to reach out to you as well. It's a good way for us, I know it was a real eye-opening, eye-opener for me every time I've done it. Sometimes things were a little closer than I'd liked, but just being honest.
Be very honest.
These folks are amazing. And so I want to thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll be in touch very soon to get that ride-along set.
Thank you. Thank you for the support.
Got a comment?
Go ahead.
The foundation, thank you for the work that you do, and chief, and staff, and the police officers, thanks for everything you do. And I had the opportunity to work with, in my capacity, eight other agencies besides Des Moines, and I've said this before, and I'm very proud to say it. Des Moines, one, they have a special place in my heart, because I've worked with them for so long, but beyond that, your officers, chief, really go above and beyond. They really do, out in the field. And they do that even in the most stressful of situations. And, you know, I've been here when we had one officer on the street and one fire guy up to where we are now and even in its heyday. But the level that this organization has come to, at least in the over forty years that I've been around it, is absolutely incredible. You know, you're an accredited agency, you've got, you know, a level of expertise and a level of professionalism with your men and women that is absolutely amazing for a department our size. And, you know, you really truly are a precinct of South Seattle. And so I commend you, your staff, and all of our police officers, all of my brothers and sisters, they're absolutely incredible, and I'm always proud to talk about them.
You wouldn't do without our supporting staff.
Yeah, no, the whole team, your whole team, you know, your staff, all of them, everybody, because it takes a lot. I mean, and what a lot of folks don't realize is the term, you've got an officer out on the street, but all of the work behind him, all of the people behind him that make them so they can do their job and deliver that service, it goes deep, and it's all critical folks, twenty-four hours a day. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, this takes us to our last item of business. An overview of our council rules and protocol. The presentation will be done by our city manager, Tony Piascik.
So I don't have a PowerPoint. What I do have, and there should be copies of it, is the council's rules of procedure. And for folks who'd be watching this at home or on video years from now, go to our website and find these rules, but I can almost guarantee you, within a year or two, there will be some changes, because as I look at this thing, these were adopted in nineteen eighty-nine, and they've been changed twenty times. So things change as we go along, as new things occur, and we have to deal with new issues. So Section One deals with council meetings. And these rules just lay out where we meet, when we meet, and the fact that all of these meetings are open to the public. In particular, a very interesting one is Rule Four, which is the election of officers. There's quite a substantial set of rules as to how the mayor becomes mayor, how the mayor pro tem becomes mayor pro tem, what happens if one of them or both of them is absent, what happens if one of them decides to step down before their term is done. So Rule Four lays out all of that kind of information. Rule Five is regarding the presiding officer, the mayor. Who is the mayor? What's the mayor's responsibility? And per this rule, the mayor is recognized as the head of the city for all ceremonial purposes, but has no regular administrative or executive duties. The mayor and the council have the ability to introduce proclamations. The mayor is basically the one who serves as the face and the voice of the city, but he doesn't have to be. Section C of that rule says, the mayor or another council member designated is the spokesperson for the city on actions taken by the council. So if the mayor, for some reason, doesn't want to do that, the mayor can turn to one of the other council members and ask him or her to do that.
I'd like to clarify, it's not a case of whether or not we want to. We work. Plus the fact that this is a shared leadership, so it's fine if others step up when certain members can't.
Thank you. Rule Six, quorum, may sound silly, but if we don't state what our quorum is, we would go to Robert's Rules. Well, we follow Robert's Rules here, which is a majority of the membership of the council, so four members makes a quorum and can hold a meeting. Three is not a quorum, can't make a meeting happen. One of the things that we do at all of our meetings, and we saw that tonight, is we had a council member who wasn't able to make it, so the council, by motion, excused that council member. Why did they do that? Well, if you read Rule Seven, it's because state law says that a council member who misses three consecutive regular meetings of the council without being excused is forfeited out of their office. And while I've never seen that happen, and a council member that is simply unattentive to his or her duties, chooses simply not to show up and not to tell anyone why, council can not excuse them for that meeting, and if they miss three in a row, they're done, and then a new council member needs to be selected.
Well, and I would note that we are informed when council members are unable to make it, and that's what motivates the motion to excuse them.
Rule Eight covers special council meetings, and I want just to say two things about that. One is the mayor can call a special meeting of the council without any other council member saying, yes, I want to have a meeting. However, four members of the council can get together and say, we want to have a special meeting, and the special meeting will be had. Special meetings, though, still are required to be properly noticed at least twenty-four hours in advance and posted, just like any other meeting. Rule Nine covers our council meeting agenda. How do things end up on the agenda? The mayor has the ability to put any item on the agenda he or she wants to. Three council members can direct that an item be put on an agenda, and the city manager can put an item on the agenda. The other special part of that rule is, once the agenda is set, the mayor does have the ability to remove an item from the agenda that the city manager puts on, but not that three council members did. However, if the mayor chooses to remove an item the city manager put on the agenda, the council can vote on that and put the item back on the agenda. So, you know, I have a member of the audience here who I know very well, who is laughing through this, but the interesting thing is, if you don't have rules like this in place, then it is, it's chaos, and you're trying to figure out, how did something end up where? Why are we doing it that way? How come we're not doing that one? How did that get pulled off? Because we had that happening. When I first became city manager in two thousand and two, the presiding officer was pulling items off of the agenda that he didn't want to see there, and it did cause a little bit of a problem. So this rule was changed specifically to deal with that. And as a matter of fact, I told you, these rules have been changed twenty times. Almost all of those were changed because either there was someone abusing authorities or just something came up that we, everyone threw their hands up and said, we don't know how to handle that. So we came up with a rule. Rule Ten covers study sessions, which can be held the first or the, and those are meant to be informal. Those are meant to be meetings where the council just talks about a particular item two or three, and it's not there for final decisions to be made, for ordinances to be approved, for contracts to be approved. And you may have noticed, sometimes on a first or a third Thursday, we are in regular format. That's because we have an item that council has to take a final decision on. Rule Eleven covers the city manager, notes that the manager is the CEO of the city and head of the administrative branch of the government, and that the city manager's overall responsibility is proper administration of all affairs of the city. And then Rule Twelve lays out that we actually have to have a city clerk, and that the city clerks, one of the rules or the responsibilities of the city clerk is knowing Robert's Rules. I'm hoping you're brushing up on those. All right. Section Two talks about duties and privileges of members, or how council meetings are run, and why we do some of the things that we do. And yes, we actually have rules that say, forms of address. At the council meeting, the mayor is called mayor or your honor, and the mayor pro tem is called mayor pro tem, and council members are called council member. And again, it may sound silly, but these type of rules are in place to keep proper decorum and keep things moving along, and it allows us to show a little bit of respect for each other. Rule Fourteen talks about the mayor is the one who figures out who sits where. So if you've ever wondered why everyone sits there and they never move, we don't move them around, it's because our rules say the mayor assigns the seats. And oh, yes, the mayor can move people around from time to time if the mayor feels that that would make for a more organized meeting, but there's a rule there. Rule Fifteen, appearance of fairness. So this is a really, really important rule. This talks about, in particular, when we are in public hearings that involve quasi-judicial issues. Quasi-judicial means the council is sitting as judges, and they have a question in front of them, and there is some sort of criteria set out in law, be it in the city code or in state law, that says if what is being asked of you meets these criteria, you must approve it. So the rule of appearance of fairness says that the hearings must not only be fair, but they must appear to be fair. Appearance of fairness, doctor, does not require establishment of a conflict of interest, for example, but whether there is even an appearance of a conflict of interest to the average person. We want everyone who's part of a process like this, be it the proponent, opponent, or just folks looking on to say, the applicant got a fair shake in front of the city council. So I would encourage you, if you really want to see how that works in great detail, read through Rule Fifteen. One issue regarding this, though I also want to talk about, is ex parte communications. You may hear that come up from time to time. And what that means is, when council is sitting as judges, they're only supposed to use the information presented to them, both in the information the city staff gives them and in the council, in the public hearing itself, when people get up and make, provide testimony, give written information, that that's the only information that they're using. So they're not supposed to be talking to folks who are part of that process. So the applicant, or someone who's opposing what the applicant wants to do, they're not supposed to talk to them, but sometimes they do. So if they do, they're required to disclose that on the record, tell everyone, here's who I talked to, here's what we talked about, and then affirm that this type of information is not going to bias me in any way based upon the entire record. All right. Moving on to council procedures. Rule Eighteen simply says, if some sort of rule or procedure that we are supposed to be following is not in our rules, then we follow Robert's Rules of Order. Yep? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. This is an important one for me. Rule Seventeen, administrative interference by council members. And I'm going to read this, the first part of this. Neither the council nor any of its committees or members shall direct or request the appointment of any person to or his or her removal from any office by the city manager or any of his subordinates. his subordinates. Except for the purpose of inquiry, the council and its members shall deal with the administrative branch solely through the city manager, and neither the council nor any committee or member thereof shall give any orders to any subordinate of the city manager. So, that means that, I think it's pretty plain what it means, council can ask questions, but council cannot direct staff to do things. They can't say, "Hey, that pothole over there needs to be fixed. Go fix it," or, "I want you to write this ordinance," or, "I want you to, to the police department, go look at this crime first rather than that crime." That job is the job of the CEO of the city or the city manager. And thank you for pointing that one out, because it is an important rule. Rule Nineteen, I want to talk about just a little bit regarding motions. And this rule was set up in order to, quite frankly, keep for a long, drawn-out process. And I know some, you've even sat through some very long and drawn-out processes when council's really digging into the detail of an item. But when a motion is made, it's supposed to be in the affirmative. If you've noticed, council has never said, "I move that we do not," or, "I move that we say no." It always has to be, "I move that we do," or, "I move that we say yes," and then, if it's voted down, then it fails. Council members are only supposed to speak to a motion twice, and they can speak for no more than ten minutes. That's the technical part of the rule. In practice, sometimes we don't follow that. The mayor could interrupt a council member and say, "Well, wait a minute. You've gone over your ten minutes. Or wait, that's your third time talking on that item." Rarely does the mayor do that, but a point of order could be called by a council member, and that could be, that could be something that the mayor would rule, say, "Nope, you're done." The other thing is, council members can't give their time to each other, which you sometimes see in other types of legislative groups. If you've ever looked at our agenda for regular meeting, you see it always looks the same. We always have all these things in the same order. That's because it is in Rule Twenty. Those things are set in there on purpose, that way, so we always know what the order of business is going to be, even though you've seen sometimes the mayor moves that around, which the mayor can do at his or her discretion, which council members can overturn by vote. I want to particularly talk about comments from the public, and that is under Section, Rule Twenty, Section F. And it runs off for about a page, page and a half. Citizens can up and, get up and talk about any subject that's not on the current, on the agenda, except if it's a study session, then you can only talk about those items that are on the agenda. You can get up and talk about items that are on the agenda during comments from the public. What you can't talk about during comments from the public is an item that is a public hearing. And you've probably seen them do that from time to time, say, "We have a public hearing tonight. If you're here to talk about that item, wait until the public hearing." Further on in that rule, we talk about rules of conduct. Each person is supposed to be given three minutes. A group can be given five. Everyone is supposed to come here. The presiding officer is supposed to be keeping time and making sure that when we're going, when someone's bumming up to their three minutes, that they ask them to please wrap up. We do have part of this rule that says, "People making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive may be ordered to leave the meeting. The presiding officer has the authority and duty to reserve order at all meetings and to cause a removal of any person from any meeting for disorderly conduct and to enforce these rules." In my 20 years with the city, 15, or 14 years with the, as city manager, I've seen someone removed from council chambers once. And it was somebody who wouldn't stop yelling from the back, would, kept trying to interrupt what was going on, and finally we had to ask that person to leave. And he took quite a bit of joy and glee in the fact that he was being kicked out of the meeting. And I can tell you the story of who that was some other time. Committee and board reports. I don't know if council was aware of this, but if you're looking at Page Eleven of our rules of procedure, board and committee reports are supposed to be limited to three minutes or less, as are council member comments. I'm just bringing that to your attention.
I would say we follow that pretty well. Usually.
Easily. Our consent calendar. The consent calendar is supposed to be for items that were previously discussed by the council and ready for action, or items that really speak for themselves and don't have to have any kind of a presentation or any further explanation, are so routine or technical in nature that they're going to be passed, or, the council says at a previous meeting, "We want it on the consent calendar." And as you see, council members have the right to ask for an item to be removed and discussed further. Do you ever wonder why council has to make a motion to adjourn? Well, that's because our council rules say that we adjourn, or the meeting runs from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And if we hit 10:00 PM and there's not been a motion made to extend the meeting, that's been approved by three-fourths of the council members present, then the meeting ends at 10 o'clock. And I've actually seen that happen a few times, where we couldn't get a motion to, or we couldn't get an item done, we couldn't get a motion to extend, the meeting automatically ends. But if it's not 10 o'clock, then a motion to adjourn the meeting must be made and approved by the council. Rule Twenty-One regards actions for a public hearing. The only part of that rule I would like to point out, because I think it's pretty self-explanatory, is Section B Four. "There will be no demonstrations during or at the conclusion of anyone's presentation." And the reason for that is subsection five, is these rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding at public hearing, to give every person an opportunity to be heard, and to ensure that no individual is embarrassed by exercising their right of free speech. Voting. As you've seen, and I've never seen a roll call, but council members can ask for a roll call vote. But that's never occurred. So, I just point that out for council, if you ever want to do that. Passage of any ordinance, grant verification of a franchise or license, and a few other things require a yes vote of at least a majority of the whole council membership. So, for example, we are missing one council member this evening. If there was an item up here that met one of those definitions, four council members would have to vote yes. If only five council members were here, four council members still have to vote yes. If only four are here, all four of them have to vote yes for those type of items. If it's an emergency-type ordinance, then we have to have five, or a majority plus one, vote yes, no matter how many are here. All the rest of the items that council votes for, it's simply a majority of those who are present. So, if you only have four council members here, three of them can vote yes on an item and it pass, even though if all seven were here, and those were the only three to vote yes, the item would be voted down. Rule Twenty-Three concerns council committees. We have four standing committees. Council can create other committees. The point I want to make on this one is, it's the mayor's responsibility to appoint the members of each of these committees. So, that's how the committees get formed. It's the mayor's decision. Ordinances, Rule Twenty-Six. I'm skipping a couple of rules here. And what I want to point out in this one is, Rule Twenty-Six-A, you hear council waive Twenty-Six-A all the time. What is Twenty-Six-A? Twenty-Six-A says, "All ordinances shall have two separate readings at two different council meetings," and that the title of the ordinance will be read into the record at each meeting. However, Twenty-Six-B says, however, Twenty-Six, the previous one, Twenty-Six-A, can be waived by a majority of the council members who are there at the council meeting. So, sometimes the council's ready to adopt an ordinance on first reading, so, but to do so, they have to waive Twenty-Six-A. It's the only rule that we have that council's allowed to waive. Rule Twenty-Eight, reconsideration. We actually had that happen the other night. Council makes a decision on something, and someone on the presiding side decides, "Eh, I want council to think about that again." At that particular, a couple of weeks ago when that happened, it was council member Kaplan that made the motion to reconsider. He made it right there that night. But if he hadn't made it that night, the deadline for him or any of the other members of the prevailing side to make that motion would have been at the next council meeting. Otherwise, you can't make a motion to reconsider. If the motion to reconsider passes, then the item is reconsidered at the following meeting. So, that's why when he made that motion, we didn't immediately pick that item back up and take another vote. It had to go onto the next agenda. If he'd waited for the next agenda, then the only thing that would have happened is it would have pushed through to the following meeting, which would have been tonight. So, just a couple of other items. Rule Thirty-Three, actually Rule Thirty-One, complaints and suggestions to council. People can come up here, and they often do, say, "We have this issue or that issue." If it's administrative, then the council decide, or, I'm sorry, if it's legislative, the council decides what they want to do with it. Are they going to refer it to a committee? Are they going to send it to staff and ask staff to work on it? Or is council going to be working on it as a whole? And you've probably, we've seen that many times. If it's administrative, then they give it to the city manager for follow-up. Rule Thirty-Three concerns filling council vacancies. And essentially, they need to follow state law, but this rule also says that they will widely distribute and publish a notice of the vacancy in the procedure and the application form, and then they have an interview for each candidate. And we had that last year when council member Banks was appointed. And then finally, Rules Thirty-Four, Thirty-Five, and Thirty-Six concern what happens here at a council meeting when it comes to recording it. We allow people to take pictures or videotape the meeting, but we ask they do so without bright flashes and floodlights and the like. And council is required, by Rule Thirty-Five, to audio-record every single meeting. And then, when the meeting is held here in the city council, it must be videoed as well. And the rest of the rules of procedure concern where we got the authority to do all of these rules, and why we do some of these things. And then our very last rule, or actually, the appendix is the Spirit of Des Moines Awards, which is something council started several years ago to try to recognize people who do extraordinary things in our community. So, hopefully you learned a thing or two as to why we do some of the stuff that we do. If you have any questions, read these rules. Of course, they're written very bureaucratically, so if you want to talk about them, I'm sure any of our council members would be happy to do that, and I would be happy to do that as well. So, do we have any questions?
One of the things I'd like to look at, Tony, is that when we set the agenda for the retreat in the fall, I would like to have council rules, at least a review, be part of that agenda, should any council member decide that, you know, now you have a copy, and there should be, you know, anyone decide that they wanted to discuss something, or how we're doing things, and reconsideration. The other thing is, I think a portion of that, another element on that agenda should be the Spirit of Des Moines Award program. I think that we need to have something designated on an annual basis, so the council's focus is here, and we can choose how we would take nominations and vet that. So, does that meet with the consent of the council? Okay, so generally, I guess we have a yes, so we can have those on the agenda?
Thank you.
Put that on futures.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, that concludes our agenda for tonight. Our next meeting will be April, actually, it's April 28th, but we have, on April 21st, the regular city council meeting has been canceled, but there will be an environment committee meeting that night. On April 28th, there will be two committee meetings before the council meeting. There will be, the ad hoc city manager search committee will meet, and the municipal facilities committee will also be meeting. And that night, we will have, it's kind of a fun meeting, because we have the Future Cities presentation from the Pacific Middle School students. We will also have presentations from our finance director. Our monthly financial report will be on, will be covered. Sound Transit will be here to give us an ST3 briefing. We'll have King County Metro Transit briefing, and Recology's annual report. So...
And now, and we added the citizens advisory council ordinance to that meeting as well.
Yes.
So, we will have a full meeting.
Yes. So, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Nutting, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington. All those in favor, well, first of all, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.